Hi, I want to first thank the Chamber of Commerce and Hack for hosting this event here tonight. I want to thank everyone in the audience, and it's always important to get informed about your candidates. I was born and raised here at Lebanon. I was raised from a single mother, and she worked at the VA and spent some still, and she encouraged me to work hard and had a belief in the importance of education and achieving goals. From that, I graduated from Lebanon High School and also graduated from Lebanon Valley College. At the time of the college, I was president of the student government, resident assistant, later become a residence director. I'm a member of the St. John's Aiding Church, and as a child, like most children growing up in here in Lebanon, I spent most of my time outside playing sports and games at various social playgrounds. I worked in the city for two and a half years, and this has given me some experience working in the different departments of the city and helping me learn how things work. I'm currently a member of the Lebanon School Board, the Cedar Foundation Board, a former member of the SARC Board, and a former member of the Lebanon Murder Club. Serving on these boards has given me the experience of working with budgets, knowing the rules, guidelines, mandates, and most important, working with others as a team. Since graduation, I devoted my life to helping others. I was a foster parent, I coached basketball and soccer. I volunteer my time to many organizations such as United Way, CLA, Lebanon Family Health Services, this is a little field. As a lifelong resident of Lebanon, I've come to love this city and its people. Our campaign model of working for a better tomorrow is just a living slogan. The years I've spent being involved in this community has allowed me to first see things firsthand and our great potential. From the submerged neighborhoods to the scores of great community organizations, as many businesses large and small, we can work together to build Lebanon as a vibrant city, and thank you for hoping, and I hope you enjoy getting to know the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cornell. Next up, Richard Wertz.
My name is Scott. Good evening. My name is Richard Wertz, and I live at 1543 Elm Street, Lebanon. I'm a graduate of Super Press High School and a bachelor's degree from the University of Nebraska-Louisville. My family has owned and operated Wertz Handies on Cumberland Street since 1931. I have worked there full-time since 1981. I'm a member and past president of the Lebanon Valley Sisterhood Club since 1994. I sit on the board of the Lebanon County Historical Society. I'm also active with the CLA, I was presented the CLA Business Personal Award in 2004. I'm seeking my fifth term upon City Council. Since being elected in 1999, I have served as vice chairman and manager. While the council has had two bridges built over the railroad tracks to ensure prompt response for emergency vehicles crossing the city rather than waiting for trains to pass circumventing the city to get to an emergency. We also have fought against blighted properties through code enforcement. We've debated all bankruptcy, also known as Act 47, like many third-party cities in common law. We have managed to avoid Act 47. It has not been easy, but I'm not backing down from any challenges. The road ahead will have some bumps and twists and turns along the way. I have the experience to deal with the road ahead. I'd like to thank the Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce and Hack for hosting this candidates forum. Best wishes to all the candidates, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, Richard, and next will be Wiley Parker.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Wiley Parker. Just to give you a little biographical information, I graduated from the University of Pennsylvania four years ago, if you remember, as well as a graduate of the University of Wisconsin Law School. I've been practicing law here at Lebanon since essentially 1975. I didn't quite make the bar admission of the rest of my class because I was serving in the Army. I'm a retired lieutenant colonel, served 22 years in the United States Army Reserve. And while I've been here at Lebanon, I've been a member of a number of civic organizations. I'm on the board of the Lebanon Valley Family YNCA, and I'm also on the board of the Lebanon Rescue Mission. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for having this candidates forum. I want to thank the Lebanon Daily News for their participation. And I want to thank Hack for making this wonderful room available to us. It's been the venue for so many city presentations over the years while I've been on the city council over the last few years. One of the things that I strive to do during my time there, oddly enough, being elected for it for the last five years as a lone Democrat as chairman of the Lebanon City Council, I've tried to strive to make sure that our meetings are open, transparent, and give people an opportunity to come and talk to us and tell us about their concerns and rights, quite frankly, about the city. I think we've done a good job in terms of making ourselves the eyes and ears for the city. I hope that I'll have another opportunity to serve. It's been a very good experience for me, and I hope that I have a chance to serve another four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and next is Cesar. What is your name, brother?
My name is Sister Juliana. It looks like I'm standing over here because I'm the last. Well, I'm very likely to say that I'm the first. Like I said, Sister Juliana, I'm from the Dominican Republic. I've been living on Lebanon for eight years. I hold a bachelor's degree in political science, and I'm proud of my family to come to this country as immigrants to succeed. Like I said, like I said before, I have an degree in political science. My sister lives in New York. She's a doctor in New York. My brother is a captain in the US Army. His wife is a captain in the US Army, too. I say that because I think that most people believe that immigrants come to this country just to take benefit of the country. And I think here to prove that that's not the truth. We come here because we want to see what we want to help this country. And I'm one of these persons. That's why I decided to come to City Council. I have a lot of ideas that I can use on this city to my experience during my 15-year working as a private company. I own two businesses, a little of my wife, and on the next 15 years, they're there, I'm going to open my business company. There's going to be a travel agency. I invest my money on this city because I believe in this city. I think that we can have a good city, that it's a good city, and we can have a better city. I think that put together, all of our, we can get a lot of better cities. But we need new leadership, new people, with new ideas. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen, now we will be given questions. And first of the evening is, what do you see as the role and function of the city council person? Cornell, we begin.
Okay, beyond the legislative role, I'm working on ordinances and approving the city budget. You are a voice for the people. You should have an order, and you should be able to be available when the people need to talk to you. You should make an appointment to get out to the people and hear their voices and be a representative of those people. You should not be a council person in name only. The people that elected you should have an opportunity to know you. Also, you are the people's safeguard to make this city in a money, appropriate the money properly in an intelligent way. No waste, not just raising taxes because it's easy to do. Once again, don't forget, you know, city councils represent all people of all communities in Lebanon. And you should, they should feel that they have a representation on the council, and they should know you by being out in the community. I did a survey, and one of the questions was how many city council members should be named? And about 60% could only name one or zero. To me, that's a problem amongst the people, and that's also might be a problem amongst the council members, that people don't know you or how to figure that out to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard?
The role of the city council, we are the legislative body of the city, and we are responsible for passing ordinances, approving budgets, balancing the budget. And most of all, I find, working on Cumberland Street with the public on a daily basis, being a conduit to the mayor, department heads, and city personnel. But the concern to the residents, they come to me and with some concerns, and I usually end up visiting with the proper department head or the mayor and just have a discussion about a concern that's brought to me. I have done this for 15-plus years, almost 16 years, as a member of council. I am accessible, and I think that's very important. I have wanted to prime watch meetings and spoken with residents and their concerns over the years. And, but I think most of all, it's being available and being present and listening. I've, on, I can count on one hand, in the 16 years that I've been on council, that I've missed a meeting. So, I go regularly, and I think that's important, to attend meetings regularly so you do know what's going on, and explain to the citizens or the concerned citizens if they have any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And Wiley?
I've got a feeling that with the format, there's going to be a lot of new tools as we go forward this evening. But I would join in what Rich was just talking about in terms of, under the city's home charter, which was passed in the early 90s, we went from a council manic organization to a strong mayor situation. And in that strong mayor situation, which I think is probably the more progressive way to handle things instead of having a bunch of people who are generalists being responsible for certain areas within the city administration. The mayor is in charge of the administration, and we are in essence a legislative body. But we hold the power of the purse strings in that we are the entity that ultimately has to approve the budget. And that's really the way that we have the most impact on what goes on in the city. In addition to that, as I said in my opening, we're the eyes and ears of the city. We're the ones, we have those meetings on a monthly basis, two meetings on a monthly basis, where the citizens can come, they can raise issues, they can talk about their concerns. And we can be a sounding board in a place where people can vent. That's what I think is probably our most important role.
Thank you, Cesar. Well, I think that everybody goes through the definition of what is a city customer, and I would like to go the other way. I think that a city customer should be a person who have a strong, one strong leadership with the community. A person who is the connection between the public and the city. And also should be a person concerned about the health of our city and our citizens. We should be, city customer should be somebody who cares about the development of the city. Somebody who, he has to oppose a video, then he has to oppose it. He has to agree with, he has to agree with you. But not all the time just go there and go through everything that the video says or the video asks. City customer is somebody to bring the idea to the city, to bring new idea, to bring something to the city, to help the mayor to get better, better government, better city, to help the mayor to succeed on the city, to do it better.
Thank you very much. And gentlemen, the next question we have for you is, please briefly discuss and share your top three priorities to elect into city council.
Okay, the top priorities to elect into city council. I have, I break down several things. Ensure public safety. Have police and fire departments adequately equipped to ensure the safety of citizens. Being accessible, I am accessible to the public. With my business on the Cumberland Street, people know where you can find me, 95. And, you know, the citizens should be able to, you know, be able to reach you if they have a concern. Also, working together for the common good of the city. If we can work together to solve problems rather than pointing fingers and accuse somebody of not doing enough. I think working together for the common good of the city is extremely important.
Thank you. Wiley?
Basically, I have three top priorities. The first one is changing the perception of the city. The second one is trying to keep city taxes from rising at a break-up level or rate faster than the rest of the county and continuing to maintain a transparent response to city government. I think that the city unfortunately gets a bad rap. It's the population density in the city that lends itself to issues and problems that people see when they read the newspaper, listen to the radio. There's crime, and there's flight, and there's, there are problems with property values. One of the things that I've been working to do and hope to do in the future is try to get that perception of the city to change. We're working with the school district to try to meet with the realtors. That's been set up. It's going to happen in November so that there will be an opportunity for the realtors to see the kind of opportunities, educational opportunities that are available at the school district. As I said, by the budgetary process, keep the taxes as low as we possibly can keep them from rising faster than the rest of the county and continue to maintain the transparent response to city government that I think we've had over the last four years.
I think that the most important for me is to get, get completely involvement with the city, engagement with the community. I think that the people of the city, they have to be more involved with our community, with either people working with our city. For the last two months, Cornell, we had a conversation, and we worked with the city and tried to clean off street, clean off some of the park, and I think that the people should be involved in that. The other one is the playgrounds. I think that we have a lot of kids playing on the street because they don't have the playground that you used to have. You know that better than me because I know from here. But they used to have a lot of playground here. And every time that I go to West Miami, or I go to 14th Street, or those places, what the people concern is that they don't have where the kids can play safely. And the people complain, they go, the kids are riding by on the street. They don't, they don't have where to go or play safely. That's where they go to buy. And the last one is, I think that we should expand our downtown. We keep talking to guys to get a better downtown, to the people, that the people come to our downtown. But if we don't have, while the people, some people can attract the people to come to our downtown, they don't, they don't want to anyway that we can improve our downtown.
There's many priorities that I would want to address and work with the mayor. First, bring business in town, but not just downtown, all over Lebanon. Get that business, there's empty storefronts all over Lebanon. Yes, we need to grow our downtown, but we also have to go beyond the downtown and get other empty storefronts that are all over our city. We need to make sure the city is working with the people addressing these blighted properties, these trash issues, and then any act deals to bring larger renter owners, bring them into the fold and work with them to try to clean up their properties. We have a lot of blighted properties, and it seems to be the same few people who own a lot of these blighted properties. We've got to figure out ways to get them to clean up their properties and stop buying property in our city if they don't want to take care of the ones they own or they don't want to pay their taxes. I would also call for full ordinance, I mean, full review of the ordinances of the laws. And I would also want to address the issues once and for all for parking meters and for residential, to find a way that either we get away, away with the meters, or yearly pass for the residents at least meters that are in front of their house. We also need to encourage more positive activities for our youth and promote the ones we have. There is a lot of activities. Sometimes the promotion of these activities is a problem. It's not that we don't have activities for youth, but we need more, promote the ones we have. We need to clean up our parks and playgrounds, and we also need to rebuild and bring back parking recreations to park in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that last question was a good segue for the next, which, now that we've talked about priorities, what do you see as your top three opportunities for the city of Lebanon in the next three or four years? And why don't we begin with Wiley?
I see, my top three opportunities for the city are, first, we just recently approved an application for a $300,000 home grant. The money from, and for that grant would be used basically to assist people in first-time home buying. Would also be assistance to people who are attempting to improve their properties and didn't have the wherewithal to do that. I think we want to encourage homeownership and want to encourage people in the city to improve their properties. That's number one. The second thing is, I think we want to use the newly acquired equipment and vehicles that we have as a result of the north-southern windfall from the bridge project to do our jobs better, more efficiently, and with, you know, doing more with less is something that the city's got to be pretty good at over the last few years. And then finally, I think an opportunity is the area between the bridges and developing that land appropriately, some sort of mixed use that adds to the tax base. It's clearly not something we want to be totally residential, but some mixed usage of that land I think would be a perfect way to improve upon the city's tax base.
We have to take advantage of some issues that is happening right now in the city. We have people moving in from outside the town, from other state. People who come here wanting to invest their money in this city, but we have to make it available for them. We have to make it easy to go through the whole process. I'm going to tell you what happened to me from the last month that I tried to open my business. I went, like, for two months to the office of Public Development when there is a lady working there, like, she's a great person, she works really hard, but she's only one day. Then, every time that I tried to make an appointment with her, she was busy or she was not there. And nobody else can take care of what I want to do. If somebody comes from out of the state wanting to put their money on the city, they don't want to go through all those processes. When we can use the technology to make that, make that process faster. That's one opportunity that we have to take advantage of, the technology. The other thing is, we have people here coming from another country, another city, who are immigrants. And they are working right now on fire and crime, anger, and we lost those assets of the city for now. Those people who want to start businesses over here, but they need to feel welcome, and they need to find a way to do it with the help of the city.
We have an opportunity to bring more business to the city, which will help with our revenue issues and will also help with jobs. Our opportunities go hand in hand with our priorities. I think we need to work with cleaner properties. And I applaud the mayor and the city council for voting to get that grant to promote homeownership. And I wish all five would have voted for it because it's to promote homeownership. It's not to bring more low-income housing to the city. We don't need no more low-income housing. We need people buying homes. We need to increase that ownership. We also need to promote getting more community involvement. We can also, if we get more community involvement, they can help the city, they can volunteer, they can help clean up the city. They can even help some of the city departments with small things in their job so they can focus on the bigger, bigger issues of the city. We can also work with the nonprofits. If you don't know, they take up about 30%, of the properties in the city. Work with them, help them lead, join forces like Lebanon Family Health and SARC that run in one building. It saves costs, it doesn't take up as many properties, and those properties, you can bring business. That's how we should do it, working with nonprofits. It's a win-win for everybody. It will bring more businesses to town and it will also bring revenue. Thank you.
My top three priorities would be the development of the former Keystone Opportunities in Lincoln Avenue and Lehman Street, the Astons, although now I just found out that's where the school will be going in there. The bridge area between 9th and 10th Street, Biden and railroad tracks. We need to market that. I think that's extremely important. Another thing is the encouragement of homeownership for the first-time home buyers. I think that's, I always can't tell people that the best values right now are in the city. There's nice properties to sell, and there's an opportunity there to, you know, start a life of lending in the city. Also, encourage investment in the city. I'm one of the biggest cheerleaders for people looking at considering owning a business. You know, I encourage them to go ahead. There's opportunities, I think, all over the city and especially in the central businesses. So, I would like to see those three items in the next four years bear some fruit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question. The mayor recently presented a proposal to create a business improvement district for a bid as a strategy to revitalize the downtown. The bid would give all stakeholders seats at table to discuss the services and needs that could best help the downtown. First, do you support the mayor's bid proposal? And if not, do you have any other ideas on how to help stimulate the revitalization and economic development of downtown Lebanon?
Initially, I do support the mayor on this topic. But I think that then it's going to be a decision of the business owner, the downtown. And I also think that we have to have new ideas for the downtown. Like, we have a main street on downtown, it's one-way. Most of the places that you go, they have the business area, you're going to find on the street two-way. Because that way you have pedestrians walking on the street, and those are the people who buy. You're not going to get people passing on cars, buying nothing on the street. We need also to bring more opportunity to the people who want to offer governance on the city. And that person who want to be hired should be have a background of marketing because we need two persons to market the city and sell the city to the investor.
Cornell?
I think overall it's a good proposal by the mayor. But I knew that there are some concerns, a lot of the risks from the business and property owners there that are downtown. I'm not sure the buy-in is there that it should be for the promotion of it or by working with each business or property owner downtown that's happening. I also wonder sometimes, we only wonder about the downtown. We seem to neglect other areas and other businesses or storefronts in other places of the city. This is a good opportunity to make it a more special place downtown. And when, growing up, I knew that's where we hung out. It wasn't at the playgrounds, it was right downtown. I would promote a business and property association. If there is not one, if there is one, much people don't know about it, maybe we should promote to have one. And we need a bigger buy-in. I heard a lot of people who say, no, they don't want this and they fear it's a tax. I don't believe it's a tax. I believe it's to help promote the city. But I don't know if the buy-in is enough. We only need a small percentage of people to say yes to this deal and we can have it. If we get 70, 80 people to say yes, then they should go for it. If you only get about 30 or 40 people say yes, then I don't think we should really have this happen. And we should go back to the drawing board and try to find out what these businesses want. We should also promote these businesses to be open at night and on the weekends when most people do their shopping. Thank you.
I support the bid at the moment, however, I do have some concerns. My concern would be, you know, you have to convince 60% of the business and property owners to vote for this and for this assessment. And while that might be a problem for some, for me, I don't think it's a problem. It's less than a dollar a day, and I think it can do some good. It would encourage people to fix up their properties. Some other things concerning about the bid are, you know, we have to do a good sell job on that. We have to convince people that this is going to be worth while. A lot of people will say, well, CLA does a lot of these things. But if you can convince people that this is a good thing, then, you know, the mayor's going to write a track. And with the bid, if it is in place, I think we should continue to work with the CLA to really promote things in the central businesses district. I do have some concerns about the central businesses district with the bid. There are some problem occupancies. There's some storefronts that don't exactly look like they're healing and are empty. I don't think, the storefront churches should be in the central business district using the commercial space. They don't generate good foot traffic. I'm not against foot traffic. I know they're just closed for a week. And I'd like to see, see that somehow, that problem taken care of. But right now, I may not support the bid, but I'm not totally sold on it.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard.
I'll save the thirty seconds and keep it on. I am, I am in favor of the bid. It's been something that's worked well in places like Westchester. My wife is very active, actively involved in economic development, and she has told me about success stories like Westchester. If you've ever been to Central Philadelphia, they have a bid that I think is very effective in improving the central business district. I think we tend to unfortunately get used to things, we don't look at what we have with new eyes. We walk past the same tree every day, and you don't notice that it's pushing up a break and making the sidewalk look like it's falling apart. But the person who walks down that street for the first time does in fact notice that. And so by having a bid, you're gonna have a new view, a new look at things, I think it's an opportunity for the city to improve its optics, and I do support it.
Thank you very much. This next question will start with Cornell. Over the past several years, businesses and government have been having to adjust to do more with less from both the personnel and the financial perspective. How do you see the city maintaining an acceptable standard of service for less employees and budget than previous years?
There has been talk, and we continue to talk about sharing services with other municipalities and combining forces. The city is to help the county, and we need to be working together with the county and making sure they're looking at the city and also providing what they need in the city and not just outside the city. We need more revenue sources, such as fundraising, more businesses, using things like our website to earn revenue. If we have, most people come to the city, the first thing they go to is a website. We need to upgrade our website, which supposedly was being upgraded for the last couple of years. And we can have businesses put commercials on there, that can bring revenue, have to promote businesses, and that can help. We need to promote volunteerism and help our cities and communities. We need a community service program to help our offices with small stuff, our stuff that focuses on the big needs. And when we get these volunteers, we gotta keep them and make sure they have stuff to do. Honestly, that's what the service I think we can do.
Okay. To help generate some more money, doing more with less, I would say we need to ask the nonprofits to share our contributions in lieu of taxes. Most that we have approached, the churches, the hospital, health service organizations have provided some, but we need to continue to, or ask them for some charitable contribution. We do take care of the streets. We recently purchased new apparatus and public works vehicles, why you mentioned earlier, about doing more with less. Hopefully, with this new equipment, we can see some success there. So, you know, doing more with less, we're getting by, and I commend the mayor for getting, doing the job that she's had to do with the budget in regards to less and less employees. They did a great job, department has of all times, a great job. Thank you.
Nobody does more with less than third-class cities in the Carolinas, Pennsylvania. Obviously, when we hit the latter part of the first decade of this century, with the economic downturn, we had to make some very painful decisions, and a lot of people go. And that was a painful decision, but it was necessary, it was something that had to happen. Nobody likes laying people off, but you just have to deal with it. And what we've done is, over that time, we've initiated, we've used technology to really make up for the losses that we suffered. There's a new accounting software that's been put in place for the city, it's been a bit of a struggle getting it up and running, but ultimately it's gonna be a real benefit to the city. There's been other technology that's been utilized to allow the people who are out there on the streets, the police with their computers, the public safety inspectors who utilize technology to prepare reports and prepare citations, so that they don't have to come back and get out their study pencil and write out somebody a citation. So, technology is really gonna be the key, and as Rich mentioned, the new vehicles and equipment that were purchased with these North-Southern money, I think will also be another example of how we can do more with less.
We have to be honest with you, Sam. I think that tax is always gonna be the main asset of the city instead of money, but that's not mean to raise taxes or put more taxes on products, that's mean to be more effective collecting the taxes. You have a parking ticket that people stay for a long time without paying a ticket, but we don't have a system that people can go and pay it off easily. If you have a website, or if you have a PayPal account, you can make a payment and make it easier for the people. Also, I think that the other asset that the city could have for raising more is gonna be business. We don't have business on the city, we cannot collect. But it's not just business that brings jobs to the city, it's businesses that people stay here to buy, to spend money in the city. Not just people come to work and leave. You need many businesses that people come to spend their money over. Spend all their money in the city, you can stay in the city. And the other one is, we have to collect more, but we have to spend less, and there's only one way to do that, is having the community join us and help us with something that they can do that we don't have to pay for doing, like the park. People can help if you clean the park, and it's not only the idea that I think happens.
Thank you very much. The next question, as we talked about doing more with less, turn the tables, and please share your ideas to help increase revenues for the city. We'll start with Richard.
To help increase revenues for the cities, well, I would say encourage investment in the city, try to attract jobs, could-paying jobs, encouraging homeownership in the city, adding new loans to, or homes to tax roll. I would just say, you know, cheerlead for the city and try to attract more businesses to consider locating here. We got jumped by the large trust building, who made a business here in Texas, that's gonna bring twenty new jobs into the city. He also bought the Broaddale Mansion and has turned it into a reception center, that's created jobs, and I think, you know, continue to attract business, encourage it.
Thank you. Wiley?
Obviously, the one way we don't want to increase revenues is by having to raise taxes, although I think unfortunately, looking forward over the next few years, that may be something that has to happen. But we could certainly look to alternatives, look to other opportunities, grant money. I was talking earlier about the three hundred thousand dollar home grant. We got grant money to allow us to improve the entrance to Coleman Park. There is grant money out, there are opportunities for us to gain those kinds of revenues without doing it and taking it out from the taxpayers' work or money. We, as Rich mentioned, we want to encourage people to have businesses in the city. You've got the Hidden Still Building, it's a great facility, and I've been there twice with my wife, they're doing a great job, obviously, there are employees there. That kind of thing builds on itself. You've got the Foundry, again, it's a welcoming place, it's a great place, that kind of thing will allow things to build on themselves. Finally, if we fight white, if we use those grant lines, we use CDPG to fight white, we can firm up the tax base, we can increase the value of the residences throughout the city and allow a rising tide to raise small boats.
I do have to agree then about the business, if we bring more business to the city, then the city can get more revenue. But also, we need to have something that drives the people to come to our city. We cannot make sure what is on our menu and trash. And we have, we need to diversity of our city, so we need to have, especially in our downtown, we need to have activity that drives the people at least once a month. Like, I mentioned the diversity, because people to city like Welling, they have parade for most of the community who live there, they have a monthly, almost monthly parade every community, and those parades bring people to the city, they wanna spend money in the city. People who spend money help the city, so the only way that we can help the city to get more money is bring business to the city and bring the people to come to buy to our city, our downtown, and expand our downtown, make it bigger.
Thank you very much. Next question, as we talk about, oh, I'm sorry, that was my credit.
Pretty much some of the same things that everybody else said. We do need aggressively recruitment of businesses to bring revenue and make our, may also be more business-friendly. We can use our website to promote and make revenue. I'm not for always raising the property tax, and it's only the homeowners who are paying for that, and they say your landlord pays also, and he knows something to rent, but I've lived in several homes where my rent has to change the whole time I've lived there, so it's not always being affected to the rent. I think we can look at other ways, and this is a bigger issue, modern cities, maybe increase the sales tax one to two percent, or look at income tax. I think we can do fundraising, it wouldn't bring a lot of money, but it would bring some money. I was just at an event at a site, it was one event, one night, one dinner, and it brought four or five thousand dollars. We can do things like that, or we can do what Mr. Matula did and raise money for a dog, around forty thousand dollars, I believe. We can do things like that to raise money for the city. We have to think outside the box and think of ways that we can bring revenue and money here, so Lebanon can be one of the best places ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cornell. And the next question will start with Wiley. Lebanon City has a very diverse population, how well are all populations served?
Well, that's a good question. I think that we clearly do have a diverse population, but Lebanon's always had a diverse population. Lebanon has always attracted an immigrant population that moves into the city and there are varied levels of acceptance by the people who are already there. I tend to think that the socioeconomic distinctions between people are probably more important than their nationality or where they come from, and what we've tried to do, and what the city does with its CDPG money that we received from the federal government, we've ascribed to use that money to make Lebanon a safer place. We use it on the areas of the city that are the most, have the highest level of poverty, to try to improve the roads, to try to give additional police patrols to avoid problems in those areas. So, I mean, I understand that diversity is an issue, but again, I see the socioeconomic differences amongst people in the city as being more important than racial or ethnic issues.
I have to disagree a little bit with Wally. I don't think that diversity is an issue, I think that is an economic opportunity. Instead of the question, on the past, I think that that's what was why I gave vote on this, because I think that the people wasn't really served, the whole community wasn't served. But especially with the last event, launched by the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Lebanon, especially to make a proof that they have the desire to share with the community, to get together with the whole community, not just be divided between immigrants, Latinos, or people who come from Lebanon. I think that mainly for us to succeed in the city is as a whole group, just like one city, not divided between the north side, the south side, the Hispanic and non-Hispanic. I think that we are a little small town, and we have to start working together in order to better this city. The diversity that we have is an opportunity for us, we just have to get to know each other, and we're gonna do our best.
I think, Cornell, I think we need to embrace our diversity more, and I also think we need to always not think diversity means color or race, diversity for me, anything man, woman, different groups, different organizations. We have a lot of diversity here. When it comes to race, yeah, there's a lot more diversity than when I was a kid, but we need to support other groups, we need to become a community as one and not be divided. I feel one way you can do that, I feel a lot, if you look at a lot of our boards, school boards, councils, and other committees that are assigned, you will see not much diversity on those boards, and I'm not just talking about race. It's mainly one type of person, one type of group representing these boards. We need more people on those boards, more women, more African-Americans, more Hispanics, a true representation of the city. If you look at council, if you look at the school board, they wouldn't, out of the fourteen, fifteen positions, if you include the mayor, only one person is African-American. That's not a true representation of our city. We need more people, we need more women, more people from both parties, independents, whoever. That's when we embrace our diversity and work together as one and help build our city. Thank you.
Lebanon has always had a diverse population. We were all immigrants, our families came from Europe, Africa, Asia, the only natives here were the Native Americans, so we are all immigrants and all assimilated into the society we're in today. I think the population is being served, there's opportunity out there for everyone. Our school system is one of the best. You know, people may disagree with that, but there's equal opportunity for everyone. So I believe everyone is being served. If they have any issues with that, they can, you know, there's help out there, we have so many organizations out there willing to help people get on their feet, to get established, find living quarters. So I think every, every, every community has this, and I think Lebanon is doing fine in serving a diverse population.
Thank you very much. Next question. While statistics show that crime is increasing in the city, the perception of crime will not necessarily match. To what do you attribute the decrease in crime, and why do you believe that there is a different perception about crime in the city? What can or should the city be doing to help change these perceptions?
I think that, well, the perception is of, is all of the media, and, because every time that something happened, kind of crime happened, you go to the Lebanon, the YouTube website, you go to Facebook, you go to the page, you start listening to people saying that Lebanon is a world scene, and there are a lot of world people over here, but I remember last, last month, I think, when there was a person dead on Bins, they, people jumped right away to blame people from Lebanon who do that, people who come here from New York, people who come here from Philadelphia, but nobody stopped to see what caused the issue, who committed crime. At the end, we know that the crime was committed from people who come from other, from other cities. The point is that the only way that we can get the city different is with education. We have to educate the people, we have to educate our community. We are not that bad, as the people want to say that we are. If not, go to Welling, go to York, go to Madison, you're gonna see that we are not that bad, like they want us to believe that we are.
I support our opposition, but I do think there is a serious perception problem, and that's part of the people, not the opposition. We need to work with that perception and not put this question off. I think there need to be more cops walking the streets, I think we need to be able to subsidize what we used to have, and more community involvement. I remember growing up, I knew who the police officers were, and knew their name, and actually sometimes they were your neighbor, and you lived in more part of the community. Now, I believe one single person, if not, is less than five, live in Lebanon City. I think the police officers should need to be part of the community that they live in and get to know the people, be respected by their community. I also think one of the issues why the statistics might be a little higher, and why they're not, is people are not reporting things, they're afraid to report things. Things happen, and nobody reports it. I hear about it, I hear about it in the neighborhoods, that this happened last night, or this happened, well, why didn't you report it? You can call the chief of police, he gives out his direct line, but people are scared to report things, so I don't know how accurate the numbers are totally, and I don't know if crime is really increasing. really increasing. And we should encourage people to report to our police officers, but we need to get our police officers back in the community like they used to be, where we knew who your, who the officers were and they lived amongst this community. Thank you.
The statistics of, uh, crime decreasing in the city, it's true. Uh, we get updates from, uh, chief of police at our, at our meetings. Um, the perception of crime, um, I, I think, you know, people have different perceptions. Uh, personally, I feel safe in the city. I've never felt threatened, I've never felt unsafe. Um, the decrease in crime, uh, what do I treat that? I think crime watches help, but I think the police, um, they, they do, uh, go and, and talk to the public, uh, when the door never runs, and say, oh, I never see them, I never hear from them, but, uh, I happen to know some of the police officers personally very well and I know they, uh, try to interact with citizens as often as they can. Uh, I thought our department, like I said, you know, the department, uh, in, in the Commonwealth, they are terrific at their jobs and I think they answer the call, uh, that, uh, when people need them and, um, but, you know, they deal with the, they talk to the crime watches, uh, the neighborhood crime watches have been, uh, eyes and ears in the neighborhood and have reported to us personally at meetings. So, um, I, I think it's a perception, uh, but all I need to do is turn on the news in the morning, Harrisburg, York, Lancaster, Redding, I don't know, I, I just think Lebanon is such a better place and, um, I attribute a lot to our police department and our other law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Wiley?
Uh, I had occasion just within the last month or so to respond to a citizen who was complaining about what he considered to be Lebanon being such a dangerous place. So I had an opportunity to do a little research, uh, into some of our surrounding third-class cities like Redding and Harrisburg and Lancaster. Lancaster particularly is, I think, perceived to be a safe and urban, up-and-coming type area, as well as York. And I was, I was actually, I guess because of a perceptual kind of issue, surprised to see that Lebanon's crime rate was actually half of all of these other cities. You are less than half as likely to be a victim of crime in the city of Lebanon as you are in any of those sister cities. And I think that says something about the effectiveness of our police force. I think it says something about the fact that there are crime watches and people who are involved and people who are interested. You know, I'm not gonna blame the idiot. Lebanon, the city is the county seat, that's where the people are, so things happen, but they're not random. Uh, I, I, I think that if you look at the statistics, you'll find that Lebanon is, is a safe place and I, I attribute that, I think, to the, to the fact that there are involved people and the police are very effective in doing their jobs. They have a really exceptional experience here.
Thank you. Uh, on a related subject, uh, drugs, specifically heroin, that's been in the news lately, is having a significant impact on our community. How serious do you think this concern is and what do you believe the city should be doing to help address this serious issue?
I think it's a serious issue as drugs have always, but drugs have always been here in the city. Um, I've known people who sell drugs on the corner in front of bars and things, maybe that has been the less, but there's still drugs and it's a problem. We need better, quick to deal with this and giving our kids different paths to take in early learning. We need to educate more about the drugs. We also need to work in our biggest, some of our biggest problems, we need to focus more on our mental health infrastructure and our drug and alcohol programs. Um, they seem to be the first things that get cut when we have a budget, but then, then those are the people that seem to have the problem. I also think that when we bring businesses to town, peop, and better wages, people will have jobs and they don't have to feel like they had to steal or sell drugs. Uh, but the biggest two issues that we need to address is to pay jobs and more services to, to, uh, deal with addiction and mental health. A lot of prob, a lot of people who have a drug problem also have mental health problems, but there's not, every time we see, that the services are the ones that get cut first. And if we wanna continue, we're never stopping our building, but we can at least control it and, um, lower it here in the city. Thank you.
Recently, um, there was a, like, drug forum held here at the Siri Room, which I attended, and it was, um, it was a, a, a very informative, uh, gathering. Uh, heroin is an epidemic, but, um, you know, it's one of those things that, um, people have been on prescription drugs, opio, opioids and whatnot, and when the, uh, medication comes too expensive, they usually end up, um, going for heroin, because it's cheaper and available. Uh, I think it's a serious problem. Uh, recently, a drug task force has been created to help, uh, the mayor and, and the county, because this isn't just Lebanon problem, it's, um, a county, it's statewide, a national problem. So, um, I think, you know, as we go along here, treatment and, uh, awareness, education, I just need to, uh, teach the young or, you know, inform them that this is a dangerous path, that if you get on this, it's, it's nothing but misery.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know how you could say that heroin isn't a serious issue. We're just looking over my shoulder here, I was like, everyone might know that this is a county, state, and national issue and clearly could be a serious. Uh, but, uh, in terms of what the city, uh, is doing about it, you know, the way that, that governments are structured in, in the Commonwealth, and this is not put the B W listeners, but, but basically the treatment aspect of things is something that's a county function and not a city function. The city function in working, uh, with the county drug task force and in its own activities, it's more of a, a law enforcement aspect of things. Although in that area, one of the things that's happening, we just were informed by the chief at our last meeting, is that the, the individual police officer can get a training in Narcan and administering, uh, Narcs along to addicts who are found, and extremists, to bring them, uh, back from, from death essentially, in the case of a overdose. So that's something that's being done. Uh, we have, as I said before, we have city police officers who are involved in the, in the county joint task force, uh, and quite frankly, some of the most high-profile overdose deaths that have occurred in the county have been in the city. We've had guests in Redding, we've had guests in other places that are, that are considered to be, uh, less, uh, urban than Lebanon. It's a problem for everybody and it's not just the city.
I think we can, we can use this because it's a public address problem. And I think that everything in love with the education. Uh, people get their, their health on, on risk with those problems and I think that we need to educate the people, especially the kids at school. They need to know what is a problem, what could happen to them when they use those kind of drugs. But another thing is that I think that we should do is we should have a more effective way to report when we know that somebody's selling drugs on our neighborhood. It's, it's known, it's, it's, it's known that something, uh, girl that, that we called to the police and when they pick up the phone, you tell them that somebody's selling drugs wrong in your house, they ask you why, why they, why they are selling. How can I know if I'm buying? So I think that we should be more effective when somebody calls to the, to the, to the apartment or your house.
What role and partnership do you see the tourism agency and the city having? Start with Cornell. Richard, I don't know.
Okay, um, the, um, the new destination marketing organization, this is Lebanon Valley. Um, I think what role and partnership we should see with them and the city having is, well, they need to reach out to the business community. I would say visit each business, uh, introduce themselves, let them know, uh, what they're, uh, offering and how they can help them, uh, be, it's us in the business, uh, community. Uh, I think, uh, just being, uh, out there, encouraging, uh, you know, people to consider opening in the miss, opening businesses in the, uh, in the downtown or in Lebanon in general. Uh, I think being right, right next to the market is a good thing and it's, uh, it's a good use for that, uh, for that part of the market. Um, and promoting tourism, I regularly get people from out of the area in my, in my business and I want to say out here, I mean, out of the area and, uh, they, they are charmed by our city and I think if we have a decent place for them to go to get information about the businesses available, I think, um, uh, it's a good thing and the city will prosper.
Uh, we're glad to see that they located in the city, uh, as we were glad that the Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce located the air band quarters in the, in the city and, and we appreciate that. And Lebanon has to work in community with and in cooperation with the surrounding municipalities. Uh, and, you know, if we all work together, ultimately it's going to help everybody. Um, Lebanon certainly has a lot of destinations and, uh, places that people would really be interested to see. There are some extremely beautiful churches, uh, the architecture is just amazing. I, I don't think that's something that's really been pressed. I think that's something that we should look at in terms of, of a tour of the county of various churches. Uh, people find this sort of thing to be extremely interesting, uh, and, and we could also look to things like bike events, uh, trying to, 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 uh, attract small gatherings, not large conventions like they're looking at in Lancaster, but small gatherings and reunions and things of that sort somewhere in the city or within the county. And again, if we work together, it's gonna improve the entire county and, and we will benefit the city, the city residents.
The city of Lebanon is the most important city of the county, so I think that we can play a main role, it is, uh, in a partnership with, uh, with them, uh, especially to promote our activity, city activity, to promote them, to, uh, let them know the people what we have to offer, the people who live outside of, uh, our county or the city. We have to tell somebody to come promote, uh, the good things that we have on Lebanon and that's what I also heard with the question that you did previously, um, that is about the, the perception that we, that the people have on the city. So if we have somebody to promote our city, to promote our activity, but we also have to partnership with them to create more, uh, activity on the city, to bring more, uh, new, new activity that the people can join. People, people can get bored and come in every year to the same parade, the same activity, when we not even one change. So I think that in partnership with them, we can get some, some other news and stuff that people can see when they come to our city.
I think it was a great idea. I also think it was great that it was brought in the city and put beside the market. I also thank some of the people who own that team or a great team and will help promote our city and our county. I think also another group that can be helpful promoters is the CLA, because they do a lot of the activities downtown in our county, they can work with them and promote things. And there's a lot that people can learn about our city. I was part of the, um, one of the classes in the chamber and I thought I knew a lot of the, everything about the city since I've lived here most of all my life, but I've learned a lot of things. I've learned about a lot of services and buildings and, um, architecture that we have here in the city just by being in that class. I think they can help promote that. They can also help be a welcoming committee for new businesses when new businesses come downtown or wherever they come to the city. They can help promote the businesses that already are here and exist and, um, I think it will be a great asset. I'm glad it's in the city because I believe the city is the hub of the county and if the city would fall, so would the county. So I believe it's a great idea and I believe there's a lot of organizations that will be able to work with it along the city councils and, um, our county government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, this will be the last question before closing comments and that is, what do you see as the role of the city and the city council in the economic community development of the city of Lebanon?
Well, I think one of the things that we can do is, uh, continue to, to look for opportunities to pass legislation like the LURDA, uh, that is a program that is designed to allow people to improve their real estate and not necessarily suffer, uh, an increased, uh, real estate tax rate, uh, for some period of time, to encourage people to improve their properties. Um, I talked a little bit before about the, uh, Chamber of Commerce moving into the city or staying in the city. We consider that to be sending a positive message. Um, the thing that you look at with the LURDA and with the KOCs, you get, uh, the possibility of working with the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Committee or Commission to, to have, uh, work done on groundfields. If you look at what Jack Keane did with the old Lebanon Steel Factory property, that's a wonderful example of what can be done in a city to take an old derelict property and turn it into a new vibrant industry, uh, that, that contributes to the tactics. I think we have to continue to look for those opportunities to work with business, to work with the agencies that are, that are out there to improve the, the economic fundamentals of the city.
I think that the city should play a main role, main role of this, um, uh, we're seeing how, um, a lot of regulations that we have, we should go back and check on those regulations. We are leading on the nineteen twenties. We have regulations from forty, sixty year that should be reviewed and checked there according to the new times. We have to make changes, we have, I think, have to make changes to improve, but also we need to, uh, like we said before, to bring more business to the city and to occupy all those, those, uh, empty spaces we have over here that make us look ugly and we have to work on it. But in order to get those funds, we have to start checking out regulations because I think that that is making that some people who want to invest money in the city have to go to other places. It's like, we don't have anything for the young people to come, like, if you are twenty-one to thirty-year-old, you don't have nothing to do over here on the city. If you don't go to one bar, you don't have nothing else to do. And I think that we should allow some kind of business to come to the city because that's gonna make the life of the city, you look better, different, and that's what we need. We are, we are different than what we was forty, fifty years away.
I think we are, we need to make sure we create ordinances that are fair to our businesses and we can also promote things like LURDA and we also need to continue to work with our school district and our commissioners. We also need to make sure we are supportive of our business, talking with them, going to them, attending their grand openings and promoting them at all costs and all times as we can. I feel sometimes some businesses get left out, sometimes you don't even see anyone from the city at their grand opening or the city council and, um, we need to build that up and be promoting more. Um, you can send anybody, you need to gotta send the chief of police, we can promote the businesses. Uh, we need to focus on the growing Latino community and how we can embrace them and be one community and not two communities. And I also always call for a full review of the laws and orders. I think there's some things on the books that could come off and I think there's some things we actually might need to, um, start enforcing that we don't enforce now. Thank you.
The, um, the role of city and city council in the economic community development of the city of Lebanon, I think it's important for the city and city council to be advocates of the city, to reach out to the business community, uh, encourage investment in the city, uh, is why I mentioned the LURDA program, uh, and the location of the Valley Chamber of Commerce, uh, in the downtown, the new Lebanon Valley Destination, uh, uh, Marketing Visitor Center, but also to keep, uh, encouraging investments, uh, into Keystone, Old Keystone Opportunities Zones, uh, partnership with the CLA, uh, season grants, uh, for example, like the SAD restoration, encourage investment. Again, it's, uh, my, one of my main concerns, uh, being on city council and working with the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. And, uh, last, we will go to closing comments. Uh, you're each allowed one moment, one minute, and we will start with Cornell.
Okay, once again, I want to thank the chamber and the hat for allowing me to host here. I want to thank everyone in the audience. Uh, it's always important to get informed and know about the candidates. I do want to also thank all the other candidates, I wish they were all here, but the ones that are here for having the courage to run and wanting to help our city. I also want to I also want to thank my friends and families and all the voters who have supported me and, um, showed me support and asked me to run. Like I stated in my opening statement, I do have experience working on enormous boards and dealing with budgets and experience like, um, I was high-staffed on the school board and I did work with the city in the past. I'm going door-to-door, calling voters, visiting businesses, attending events, hosting meetings, and getting out there and getting to know the voter. It's important that you get to know the voter and they get to know you. I will continue the campaign to November third and I wish, I will not sit back like some others and just assume that they will vote for me. I will allow, I'll earn their vote. Please vote for me on November third. If you get three votes, please vote for me. And come to the next debate on the twenty-sixth at Lebanon High School also and hear from the, um, city council candidates again and hear what they have to say or when they can talk to each other. Thank you, Cornell.
I'd also like to thank, uh, the Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce, HAC, and the Lebanon Daily News for posting tonight's candidates form. Uh, best wishes to all the candidates and thank you all in attendance tonight. Um, I have the experience and, um, I, I know these guys love this, love the city like I do. So, uh, I commend them for, um, stepping forward and seeking elected office. Um, as we go into the next, uh, few years, we have a lot of, uh, concerns, uh, specifically, uh, balancing the budget. And I think my experience working with the mayor and the, uh, department heads, uh, that's, uh, uh, the experience that is necessary for, uh, moving the city forward and keeping us, uh, on the right track. Uh, I'm confident that, uh, I can do, do the job again. I've done it, uh, since nineteen ninety-nine serving on city council. I don't take this job for granted. I love it. It's a challenge. Uh, I've met many wonderful people in this, in this community. And I would ask for them to consider, uh, uh, re-electing me. And on that note, I wish you all the best and consider voting for me on November third. Thank you.
Um, excuse me, I too would like to thank the, the Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce and HAC and, uh, Lebanon Valley News for making this, uh, possible. I wanna thank everybody for coming out and, and listening to us. Um, I'm sure this is not the most simply way you could use your evening, but, uh, but we do appreciate it. Uh, and I too wanna join in thanking, you know, the people who are up here for stepping forward and deciding that they're gonna try to make this a better community. As I've gotten those faces are and, and Cornell a little better over the last several months. And I know Rich from serving with them on city council. Um, it's great to know that people are willing to step up and, and, and do something for the, for the city. Uh, with me, it's basically, as they say, whizzy wig, what you see is what you get. I've been doing this job for eight years. I'd like to think that I've, I've performed in confident and, and, uh, interested in dynamic fashion. And I'd like to continue to serve the citizens of Lebanon for four more years and I promise that in my life that I will not run again. Thank you. Very much, Cornell.
I would like to thank the chamber, HAC, all of you here, but first I would like to thank, yeah, allowing me to be here. Uh, every time that I go out and talk to the people, I especially then know that this is not about money, this is not about me, this is not about Cornell or Wally, this is not about us, this is about our city. And I think that with the great candidate that we have right now over here, we have a bright vision. So either you vote for me or vote for any of them, I just want to encourage you to keep working for our city. We have a beautiful sweet city. We have to take care of it. We have to make the people feel proud of our city. And that's our vision. That's what we have to do. And that's what we have to tell everybody in the county. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you all very much.